And welcome to the ESER funds public hearing on behalf of school board members. I would like to thank you for taking time this evening to come and address this important topic. A reminder, a mask that covers the nose and mouth must be worn at all times by everyone in attendance. If you have a mask exemption or if you need a mask break, please take advantage of the overflow room set up in the gymnasium. Tonight we have 20 registered speakers and each speaker is allotted two minutes to address the board. The timer will start when you begin to speak and the buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your two minutes. Your remarks must address the ESER funding. When your name is called, in person speakers should approach the podium and begin speaking. Virtual speakers should turn on their microphone and camera and begin speaking. If speakers are not present when their name is called, those names will be called again after the final speaker. If you have not registered to speak tonight, but would like to have an opportunity to address the board, please see the clerk to sign up for one of the five extra speaking slots. Your name will be called after all registered speakers. Also, there will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all of the registered speakers have addressed the board, I will announce whether there are any no show slots available. For this, we ask that you state your full name at the time you speak. After you have spoken, please see the clerk so that she may collect your contact information for the record. Madam Clerk, please call the first names.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Samir Atif. Our next speaker is Theo Glowaski. Our next speaker is Norm Hall.
Good evening. I call for a do over. Let me explain why. After the law providing SO3 was signed, the regulations with the strings attached were published in the Federal Register on April 22. Additional strings were attached when the Virginia Department of Education set up grant guidelines. Now, when a student with a disability gets services through an individual education plan, their education is still subject to protections from overall IDEA laws and the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is why I think it's important to look at more than IEPs when evaluating services for students with disabilities. When SO regulations were set, vaccinations were rare, and there have been a number of health developments since then. But regardless of how well FCPS has done with an array of mitigation measures, what matters is data. And if you look at the FCPS health dashboard as I do, you will see that we have not seen any trends showing reductions in cases. The community needs a quality look at the needs of immunocompromised students and staff. The purpose of SO3 was to help schools reopen safely as well as recover, making sure a full range of voices were heard as decisions were made. What happened here in Fairfax is that the funds were allocated to schools by a formula, and in each school followed guidelines based only on the state's attached strings, not the feds, which would have given voice to parents, teachers, and staff when they are not primarily concerned about one particular school. To be clear, while I heard that the work session this week were great ideas contained within the school plans, and the school board did well to highlight some inequities in the provision of services, but missing from the whole session was any discussion about the opportunity or fiscal costs of accommodating immunocompromised staff and students when there are unmasked individuals present while COVID cases are high and long-term COVID needs are better understood. If nothing else, your SO plans need to be revised to make these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Hoag. Paula Hoag. Our next speaker is Rebecca Houston.
You took an oath to the United States and Virginia constitutions. In so doing, you promised to represent the interest of the citizens of Fairfax County, specifically when it comes to the operation of the public schools. Currently, Fairfax County Schools has two huge budget components from which to draw, SO federal taxpayer dollars and state and county taxpayer dollars. In regards to SO funds being doled out by the federal government, it is of utmost importance that you be reminded that you have a sworn duty to steward these funds according to the interest of the citizens of Fairfax County, not the dictates of the federal government. Fairfax County is eligible to receive up to 188 million SO dollars, with some of the money having already been spent on projects that have little to no positive impact on the education of this county's children. In fact, students have fallen behind academically and developmentally. While kids were enduring the nightmare of virtual learning, you spent 2.4 million on panorama education to datamine our children. Funds went to renaming schools and hiring CRT curriculum consultants from New York City. Since 2020, Fairfax County Schools has lost more than 11,000 students due to virtual learning and universal masking. Those students did not move away from Fairfax County. They are either being homeschooled or attending private school. While those students have left the public school system, they have not left your calculations for budgeting purposes. This year, you projected 189,944 students, when in actuality, there are only 178,595 students. At a cost of 17,000 per student, that represents an unused 193 million budget dollars. SO and the extra unused state tax dollars totaling 381 million, along with the additional 60 million you've requested for the upcoming year, must be directed to remediate academic, social, emotional, and developmental loss of students, and to compensate the teachers and staff who have endured the nightmare of your failed past two years. It's not too late to bring academic excellence back to Fairfax County Schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Adams.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Bray Brandon, leadership team. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am speaking as the president of the Fairfax Education Association. The students and staff in FCPS are grateful that hundreds of millions of dollars were provided through SO funds to help us mitigate the effects of this pandemic. As we address safety, interrupted learning, and emotional toll in our lives, it was good to know that we had well-designed plans in place to move us all forward. The FEA does may remain concerned with a few items. Masking of students will shift to optional on March 1 by state law. Your staff are attempting to continue to function in a high-risk environment. We appreciate requiring masks for all employees will continue until we meet the moderate transmission numbers in our county. The recent purchase of KN95 masks for staff and students is a welcomed addition to the current layered mitigation protocols, and we thank you for that. More masks should be on order for the rest of your staff who request them. Air purification in spaces without windows needs to be reassessed now that masks are moving to optional and social distancing is not possible. HEPA air filtration may be needed to be added in windowless spaces that may not have been assessed in over a year. During the pandemic, instructional staff took on the burden of adding social-emotional lessons to their curriculum base. This is not easy for all staff to take on. The FEA asks that FCPS reevaluate direct delivery of this curriculum and its efficacy, as well as the burden of the additional teaching period, especially in middle and high school. Finally, we address the summer bonus pay. It is critical to the caring culture in our system that this be addressed as soon as possible. In the fall, we brought you a petition by hundreds of your employees asking for you to reallocate summer SO dollars. Tonight is the best time for us to remind you of this, and we will continue our advocacy in the coming weeks. We appreciate that this board has taken on a lot during these extraordinary times, and public lives have been lost. Your employees have done the best to mitigate the continued.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Mallard.
Thank you. Good evening. The Biden Administration Department of Education under the direction of Secretary Miguel Cardona secured COVID-19 money and distributed it to all the states under a program that we all know as the American Rescue Plan, E S S E R. Over $122 billion went to state's Department of Education, and a significant portion of the funds are designed for mental health support. Okay, what could go wrong? Well, as it turns out, the US Department of Education, under supporting students' social, emotional, behavioral, mental needs, gives the guidelines for school supporting LGBTQ 2+. And this provides a lot of major support. One of the areas, of course, as we've been seeing in schools, is the huge increase of kids who come home one day and tell their mommy and daddy, "I'm not a boy, I'm a girl." This has devastated families, and I know several of them. Once the individuals, if there's any doubt about the priority of relief funds, Secretary Cardona dispelled them. And behind these funds is the NEA with four million members, and they give strong support to any. Teachers are not penalized or counselors are not penalized for brainwashing kids. We know, some of the parents here know what has happened. So, FCPS awarded $186 million of SO funds. This has caught the attention of many Fairfax County taxpayers. They're very concerned. And we also learned that Panorama Education got a bunch of money. A.G. Garland's daughter and son-in-law were involved with Panorama. This is, you know, what is.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teague Tolson. You're muted, sir.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm calling to, or joining in to speak on what I believe is Section 3 of the ESERS refers to remote learning. I think the overall goal is wellness for all parties, not just the children, but the teachers, and let's not forget the parents. I have three children spread across elementary and middle school. I attended back-to-school night, parent IT night, and was kind enough to get some extra time from my local school IT coordinator. I spent, I have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to understand schoolology, and I won't be able to expand that with all three children in middle school. There's a disconnect between how the system was described and how it's being actually used. Most recently, monitoring the assignments that were due for one of my children, there were only two items that were overdue. I had a surprise when the weekly progress report came, and six items were overdue in one class alone. So there's obviously a disconnect in how it was meant to be used and how it is actually being used. I have 25 years of working for large IT companies in this area, so I have more than average experience in rolling out large systems. If you allow users six ways to do something, they will find seven ways to do it. So I would ask that some of the funding be set aside to create a best practices guide that needs to be implemented across the board so that parents and students and teachers can all rely upon the information that is being provided in the system we were told to look to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Missy Pratt.
Good evening. FCPS was awarded $188.6 million in SO3 funds, and in August, released a chart with a proposed spending plan of those funds. From the FCPS website, the SO3 fund is, quote, "to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operations of schools and address the impacts of COVID-19 on the nation's students by addressing students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs." So, that's your plan. But thank God for organizations like Parents Defending Education, who are investigating and exposing where you are actually spending our money. Take the Panorama contract. Your version of social-emotional learning is a contract with Panorama Education of $2.4 million, which Mark Zuckerberg is a primary stakeholder. You're spending our tax dollars, our tax dollars, to datamine and sexualize our children. You are sexualizing our children with our tax dollars, our tax dollars. Each of you are thrusting your personal ideologies and agendas into Fairfax County public schools. These ideologies are foundationally Marxist in nature, which makes them communist in nature. That is the bottom line. So, all of the funding that we have entrusted you, school board, and you, Dr. Braybrand, to appropriately attribute to supporting our children are going to sexualizing, a huge portion is going to sexualizing our children. Have you read, and I've read them here in this room to you, have you read those questions? Have you read those sexual liberation, gender liberation ideological questions? Shame on you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lena Hashem.
Good evening, Superintendent Braybrand, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Lena Hashem, and I'm an FCPS employee. As you consider priorities for our SO3 funding, I'd like to ask you to allocate sufficient funds for upkeep and remediation of school buildings, especially in regard to mold. While urgent issues related to the pandemic have rightly taken priority recently, this less apparent problem is continuing to grow away from the spotlight, and it has real effects on students and staff members. Mold is a serious health risk, and it is common in schools. Its effects can go far beyond allergies and asthma. Some types of mold are carcinogenic, and mold can suppress the immune system, leaving people vulnerable to a wide range of infections. Speaking personally, mold ruined my health. As buildings age, mold is becoming an increasing problem. Leaks in roofs, windows, and HVAC systems, and other structural weaknesses allow moisture to accumulate. Trailers are especially susceptible, and many of our trailers have been in place much longer than originally intended. When mold is found, the remediation is often inadequate. It may consist of cleaning or painting surfaces or replacing ceiling tiles without addressing deeper issues. This prolongs the problem and poses a health risk for both students and staff. To control mold, the CDC recommends measures, including controlling humidity levels, which is difficult when the AC is off in the summer, and promptly fixing leaks. Buildings also need to be properly maintained so these leaks don't happen in the first place. When mold is discovered, it needs to be properly remediated by a mold specialist. This should include removal of all the surfaces within the walls and behind the ceiling tiles that have mold growing on them, with measures such as testing before and after the work and containment to prevent cross-contamination. Clean air is a right, and a healthy environment is a basic necessity. We need to fund the upkeep and repairs needed to provide a safe environment for students to learn and staff to work. As you balance the many needs and urgent issues facing you, please dedicate the necessary funding to repair and remediate our school buildings, an important aspect of reopening safely. Thank you for your time and consideration on this important health and safety issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Sherwell.
Yes, sir. The most money ever given to public education is a payoff from the government to follow their dictates, disregard parents, students, staff, and now your governor. When you took money from the $1.9 trillion rescue, American Rescue Plan, 122 billion were allocated to K through 12 schools. When the Act got signed into law, March 11th, March 19th, the CDC conveniently issued updates to its guidance on April 9. On April 9th, the Department of Education updated its COVID-19 handbook, and then the interim final requirements for those ESER funds dropped on April 22nd, which included the universal wearing of masks, contact tracing, diagnostic and screening, testing, more. COVID mandates were treated with the draconian measures of a hemorrhagic fever outbreak, like masks and quarantining. Oddly, OSHA's 29 CRG 1910.134 respiratory protection standard has no criteria for masks. This is a pay-to-play system between the government and our schools. It's not doing our children any good. The test scores are falling, grades are low, reading and math is degraded in our school system, and students are leaving in droves. All of this led here. Parents have been coming for months, telling you, "Stop, enough, we're done. This is our tax money being used against us." That's why tonight, you're being served with a notice of intent to file a claim against your performance coverage, as you are all in violation of your oath of office, the Virginia Constitution, the United States Constitution, and federal and international law. You have 72 hours to redress our grievances and meet our demands, or we will file a claim with the Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Insurance Risk Pool with the $10 million coverage and $2 million deduction.
If, ma'am, if you have any legal documents, please go ahead and give them to Mr. Foster,
Our next speaker is Gail Rogers. Our next speaker is Maria Posey.
Hi there. My name is Maria, and I'm a proud mother of an FCPS kindergarten. I am also the daughter of a teacher and a lifelong learner. I want to share how much I adore people like my mother, and teachers generally, who dedicate their lives to helping others learn. I didn't grow up here in the U.S., but one of the things I learned from my teachers was that learning wasn't always fun. It didn't always feel good. Learning involves questioning, and thinking, and reflecting. Did you all learn that way from your teachers, too? For example, here are some things that I learned when I moved to the U.S. 15 years ago, and you probably already know this. The English didn't just discover Virginia, they brutally colonized it over the objections of over 20 Native American tribes that were already here. George Washington wasn't just a celebrated general and the first U.S. president, he was also a master of slaves that he kept at his home right here in Mount Vernon. Centuries later, descendants of these Native and Black American families continue to face discrimination due to policies like redlining in the 1930s and 40s, which restricted the family's abilities to get mortgages and buy homes, school segregation in the 50s, which limited education opportunities, and banking deregulations in the 1990s and 2000s, which enabled predatory lending along racial lines. This is in part today why in Fairfax County, the median income of white families like mine is 50% higher than that of Black families, and nearly double that of Native American families. Ouch! That's not very fun. That didn't feel good to learn about.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Twig. Andrew Twig. Our next speaker is Ilana Donniger.
FCPS has said that the majority of ESER funds are dedicated to unfinished learning and supporting student needs. I know there's been a heavy investment in targeted programs, and that's great, but there's a group of children who are struggling as a whole, and these children are not getting the help that they so desperately need. I'm asking you to help our first graders. My name is Ilana Jürgen Donniger. I have two FCPS students, but I am here today as a parent of a first grader because this group of little ones needs advocacy desperately. My first grader is in a class that's struggling, surrounded by other first-grade classes that are struggling, surrounded by schools and schools of first-grade classes that are struggling, struggling to such an extent that if more intervention isn't done ASAP, then I really believe that these six and seven-year-olds could become the lost class, could become those kids year after year, the group whose collective behaviors impact their ability to learn and progress academically, hurt their ability to make and maintain relationships, and forever damage their self-image and self-confidence. These teachers are doing the very best they can, it's just that the circumstances are impossible. My first grader is in a class of 27 kids. 27 first graders to one teacher should never be a thing, even in a normal year. Now imagine around half of those 27 kids never stepped foot into a kindergarten classroom, never learned those soft skills that kindergartners normally spend all your learning with the help of two adults. To quote a favorite FCPS kindergarten teacher, "Kiddos learn so many essential skills in kinder outside of academics that can set them up for success with listening, learning, and just knowing how to be at school." I've been talking to their parents and to teachers. I don't know a single first-grade parent who doesn't feel like their child is struggling in some way, or that their child's teacher is struggling in a way that's impacting their child's educational well-being. I've heard from second-grade parents that many kids haven't caught up from losing a third of their kindergarten experience. I hear that kids in over-credit classrooms are struggling the most, and of course they are. How can all this catch-up happen, and how can teachers build a happy, connected learning community when there are so many struggling students in each over-credit classroom? The consistent message from parents and teachers is, "Send help, they need help." So here is my ask: send help. Send help to those first-grade teachers and students. Start now, now it's not too late. Triage the most critical cases. Find all schools with over 24 kids in first or second-grade classrooms. Give them ESER funds to hire shared grade-level IAs as soon as humanly possible. If more isn't invested into these little kids this year, things will not magically be okay next year.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shauna Yashar.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for agreeing to post the full ESER proposals on each school's website, and I want to thank Ms. O'Mash and Ms. McLaughlin for your advocacy and helping to get that happen. I think that's going to be really great for our community, so thank you for doing that. I also appreciate that it's an evolving process. I listened to the comments at the work session this week, and I listened to Dr. Presidio's comments about that. But please continue to update that information regularly, provide that information to your community on a school-by-school basis. The great work that was done by the ORC reporting was wonderful, but on a school-by-school basis, it's really important for us to see that. At a school level, I can't look at that and see what's happening at my daughter's middle school, or my daughter's elementary, son's elementary school. We need it broken down individually, so please continue to update that information. Thank you. The one other thing I noticed on the report from this week, so I did listen to the session, that virtual tutoring is coming. Virtual tutoring. You know, the reason that these kids need tutoring is because we were virtual for an entire year. My daughter was virtual for 377 days. Virtual tutoring isn't going to work for a lot of these kids. It's not going to work especially for kids with learning disabilities. The reason that it didn't work for them, you know, for the whole year, is because they couldn't make those connections. That multisensory education that you're going to spend a lot of money on, that Orton Gilliam training, doesn't work virtually. My son has dyslexia, it does not work for him, and I know. I paid for one-on-one tutoring all last year, and he didn't get better. We ended up having to, you know, look for a special school for him to go to, for him to be able to get this. So please, don't just rely on virtual tutoring. Let's look for some in-person tutoring for these kids. That program does sound good, I'm not saying that it's not great, but we need in-person instruction for these children to make up for the learning loss of an entire year. And that's it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rashid Abdullah. Our next speaker is Mary Craddock. Our next speaker is Nimrah Shaquille. Our next speaker is Shelley Arnoldi.
Hello. Today in the newsletter, the Board of Supervisors stated that a decision should be made by local school boards who know their unique local circumstances. So I was studying the Virginia Department of Health data for Fairfax County, and it appears that students aged 5 to 19 had zero impact from COVID, and I'm sure you're all aware of that. So, the masks and the vaccines that you're requiring when you have 81 hospitalizations and zero deaths of persons 5 to 18 in 23 months does not make sense. I've often asked to discuss or look at the data and the advice you're getting from medical doctors, and I have not received it. Community transmission levels are unattainable, saying 50 per, 50 per 100,000 is literally one per 2,000. A high school of 2,000 people, if you get one case for seven days, you're going to call it high transmission. That is not a reasonable number. So I would beg that you guys discuss community transmission with parents and the community so they can actually have some input on what's safe and what's not safe. As for the ESER funds, I would ask that you consider reevaluating the way you have it largely aligned to observe wellness needs, and you have it moderately aligned to observe academic needs. Well, academic needs, you're a school board, this is a school. Academics are what we're supposed to be teaching. I understand wellness, we're parents, but when you look at the amount of spending that you have on intervention for special ed contracts, and social-emotional wellness, and family liaisons, and the millions of dollars on cybersecurity, focusing on academics is more important. And when, I haven't seen any data, I haven't seen any surveys, and since the summer of 2020, I haven't been surveyed on input what's important. I have four students in high school, and I've not been asked what is important, what's happening with their, except for their emotional, sexual requirements and drugs. I would like to be asked about their education, please.
Thank you. I see that Speaker Number One has signed on, Samir Atif.
I tried to go to the school board meeting, but I guess this will work, too. So, I go to Sangster Elementary School, I'm a Muslim student, and I have a lot of Muslim students in my school. And a problem we have is that lunches, school lunches, they don't serve halal meals. So, we can't have chicken nuggets, burgers, stuff that we like. So, I know this doesn't have anything to do with the ESER funds, but can you please start putting halal food in lunch menus, at least some halal food options?
I will call the other no-show names at this time. Theo Glowaski, Paula Hoag, Gail Rogers, Andrew Twig, Rashid Abdullah, Mary Craddock,
Thank you all for attending this evening's public hearing, for sharing your comments and your concerns. We will be taking a half an hour break before the regular meeting is reconvened.
The board will go back to our closed meeting. Thank you.